Our gracious heavenly father, we're so humble and grateful that we could come before thee this day. We're thankful for the opportunity we have of being of car- a part of town council. Bless us that we may strive to make wise choices and keep the people of Cardston in our hearts and in our minds. We got some special blessing on those that are struggling with the effects of COVID nineteen. But they may feel of our love and support, whether it's personal or business or whatever it is. We're grateful for thy hand and all we have. Help us that we may strive to make good choices and be respectful and kind. We're grateful for all these things and we say them humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
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 Thank you, Councilor Brown. Well, today is the twelfth of May two thousand twenty and it's a regular town council meeting. And we are calling this meeting to order. We like to recognize Bill Hills for Temple City Star. Thank you for being with us. We also have in the chamber, we have a councillor Court, but we are over two meter apart. And we have Sham that is also over two meter apart, so we're good. All right, we have the agenda that has been given to you. So unless you see anything that needs to be added to it, we will ask for a motion to adopt it.
I'll make that motion.
Yep.
So you made a motion to adopt the agenda?
I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Councilor Barnes, I need to see your hand or hear you. Thank you. So we have at this point, uh, in your pocket, you could see there is a delegation that will be there at six P M. But really that's a public hearing for the bylaw sixteen eighty-nine at six fifteen. We have Colton Quinton that will have to be in pro session. So we'll go directly to five adoption of minutes. We have the minutes of the April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty, uh, meeting that are attached to this document. So I peruse them from them to be according to the intent. So unless there is things that you feel you need to ask to be changed, uh, as for motion. Councillor Drew? Uh, Councillor Drew, unmute yourself. I'm not hearing you.
Um, I'll make a motion to adopt the April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two minutes.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So let's go right now to the under six. We're going to do six A, we're going to do the budget. As you could have seen from the numbers and the little blue highlighted section, there is a few changes that had to occur. And I will let Jeff explain that to us.
Everybody tired of the budget yet?
Yeah, it happens every year.
Yeah, it it does. It's starting to feel like it never ends, but here we are again. We're near the end for this year, I assure you. Um, I just wanted to draw your attention to some things that changed since we talked last. They're mostly all around the electrical system, distribution, transmission stuff. So Kevin has an opportunity this time of year to look at any applications that the A U C has had. And to, if they impact us, to tweak things. Now, you will notice if you look down at the bottom of page one, in the one nine two accounts, these are really small changes relative to the overall revenues. So, you know, a thousand dollars, twelve hundred dollars, even four thousand and fifty-eight hundred, so quite small. Um, but just trying to get those short up a little bit more. And I wanted to mention, now I think we're all using roughly the same budget sheet. On page two, uh, at the very end of our revenues, one nine two five nine five. Um, what you have there is we, we broke out, and this is new. We broke out any generation related accounts. So before any solar revenues or solar expenses were in our general electrical accounts, we broke out so that we're going to budget separately anything related to the revenue, the solar farm, so that we can see how that looks on an annual basis, kind of on its own. So what you see is we reduced the revenue on the solar farm because it isn't live yet. And so it's simply just prorated for going live June first. That's what it is. Um, but also our payments are prorated, so just keep that in mind, that that also prorates our payments that are due.
So can I just ask, sorry?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councillor.
Um, so when we show this revenue on our budget, are you going to do that on a, a monthly basis, on an annual basis for the solar farm? Or how, how is that going to look?
So this and this budget is for the rest of the year. When we present you financial statements, I'll see if, that's a good question. When we do our financial statements, those are grouped a little heavier. Obviously, they don't show every line item. I'll look and see if we can represent that separately on the monthly financial statements to see how that's going.
Be nice to see that, just to see how much it is. Okay, thanks.
I'll make a note here. Um, so after that, there was no other changes for a few pages, actually. Uh, there was a very small one on page four, which was two four three two oh one. And all that is, is with this COVID nineteen, the transfer station has been unusually busy. It's just been bonkers up there. And so I've added a three thousand dollars in for Doug to bring in somebody for the next couple of months. So there's two people there, um, just to supplement his contract because they're just getting slammed up there. It's wild. And so this hopefully can help. And what it does is when, when he's overwhelmed, we get stuff in the wrong places, then our ability to deal with it becomes more difficult. So he's got a couple of guys that work for him quite a bit that, and they're only open three days a week. So I'm hoping that gets a couple of months of them. And then if you go to page six, that's where the rest of the, the changes are. Um, and I want to just talk about one of them in particular. Whoops, sorry, I just dropped my pen. There we go. Um, so on page six, uh, two, actually, I'm going to skip something, go down to two nine two eight three zero. So two nine two eight three zero was the solar loan payment. Now, if you remember what it said a few pages ago, that payment is higher than what the solar revenue was in the budget. But don't panic just yet. There's a reason for that. Um, that's the revenue that we anticipate for the rest of the year to come off the system. And we also anticipate an additional, um, eighty thousand dollars in, um, savings on line two nine two two hundred. So if you'll go up half a page, two nine two two hundred distribution access tariff, it's at eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Just for reference, in twenty nineteen, it was nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. So we're expecting that cost to be reduced by sixty grand. Um, so between the revenue and that cost reduction, that will exceed the payment for the year. Okay, so the discussion there was that the, the solar farm would cover its own financing. But if you just look at those two first lines, it doesn't look like it does. It looks like it short twenty grand. But we are budgeting a significantly lower distribution access tariff in twenty twenty than, uh, than we had in twenty nineteen.
Jeff?
Yep.
It looks like, uh, let me see, let me find it here. The, uh, two nine two two oh one on page six.
Hmm.
Uh, we've got training under, uh, under light. Uh, have we got an apprentice?
No, but our guys have to go every year and do upgrades and things like that every year to keep their certifications.
Okay, are we good? Are we going to look at apprentice in that department?
Uh, no, that's not the plan. Um, we, we're, we're staffed. We have a seasonal. Uh, so you're, you're using the term apprentice. I guess we might be talking about the same thing. We have a seasonal, uh, guy that works for us and he is, he's going through the program, but we're not sponsoring him.
Oh, okay.
So he's not technically an apprentice for us, but he is getting hours with us in the summer season.
All right, thank you.
Um, okay, the other one I want to talk about, because this actually ties into the borrowing bylaw. And it's not exactly how we left it at the end of last meeting. So I'm going to acknowledge that right up front, but go with me for a minute. If you go down to in our net sources of operating funds, one dash one two dash five nine seven on page six. This is loan proceed revenue to fund capital expenses. And we have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the downfall line loan. Now, when we left this meeting last time, we talked about applying almost three hundred thousand dollars worth of reserves and only borrowing the difference. So this budget doesn't do exactly that, but let me explain for a minute. And if it's okay if you still disagree with my approach here, but hear me out. So what we've done in this budget is we pulled a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from that reserve. So that, um, the borrowing bylaw didn't change. It stayed at four hundred and fifty. And then the difference comes from reserves, a hundred and sixty-five thousand. And we intend as we, so Hocken and I were looking at the line of credit versus Alberta Capital Finance, the terms, the penalties, the interest rates, all of that. We were having that discussion last meeting. So Alberta Capital Finance is in a real state of flux right now. With the volatility in the lending market, they've frozen everything. They're not lending. And they want to wait until things settle down a little. And part of the reason is that they lend, they have loans guaranteed from third parties. And I don't understand their whole scheme, but the point is they're not lending right now. And their penalties are fairly substantial for getting out of the loan early. So there, they said we'd be around ten thousand dollars to pay out the last two years of that loan. If, uh, the, the credit union is willing to give us a line of credit at straight prime plus zero. And so when we look at that, if we operate this loan out of the line of credit uh, and pay it off sooner than the total fight, the total that we were looking with Alberta Capital Finance with no penalty, we're probably better off to leave it in the line of credit at the credit union. And then here's what I want to propose to you as far as paying it back a little quicker. I recognize that we only used about half the amount in the reserves that is available. And the other thing is we have seventy thousand dollars in operating for repairs on the downfall line this year. And as Hocken and I were talking, the other thing that this budget scares us a little bit is we don't know the impact on recreational revenues because of the COVID nineteen. So we're pretty nervous about all that. So what we're proposing is we take a hundred and sixty-five thousand from reserves. We take four hundred and fifty from the credit union. And at the end of the year, if we are fortunate enough and we manage our recreation properties wisely enough that we have a large surplus, we take the operating repair money, even the rest of the reserves we didn't spend now and any surplus, and we could probably pay that thing off. Um, or if we don't want to pay it all off, we pay a big chunk and then we, we budget to pay off, uh, a big chunk next year. But we think this could be a two or maybe three year at the most financing, depending on our surplus position after this year. And I'm too scared about what, particularly the golf course, I'm going to be frank. That, that could be a hundred and fifty thousand dollar swing right now. And I, I just don't know what that looks like. So I've, I've left that other hundred and fifty in reserves just because that makes me really nervous. So that's what we've done.
Jeff, Jeff, just to, uh, have a question there from, uh, Councillor Brown and Councillor Bengry. Go ahead, Councillor Brown.
So golf course, but pool as well, right? Because we'll be saving a pile of money not open. I mean, let's say in a month the pool opens. Well, obviously then money is there to have it open. But if because of the provincial regulations, it does not open, you know, they say, okay, you can open it August first. Well, is it worth opening it?
Yeah, right, right.
So.
So the best, the best financial case for us is that the pool doesn't open. But in the event we're at phase three of the reentry plan by July fifteenth, which I'm doubtful, but let's say, maybe we are.
Yeah.
Um, we have this conundrum where we're going to open the pool and take in, uh, substantially less revenue and incur most of our costs.
Yes.
Right, that's the, that's come, I don't want to say the worst case scenario because we want to provide the service, but financially, it's not great.
Right.
So there's just a lot that's unknown there.
Thank you.
And yet we still have to do the repair to the pool.
Yeah, we're still going to work on the finding the leak and getting the repairs and all that stuff for sure. Yeah.
Okay, Councillor Bengry?
Uh, Jeff, we're not eligible to, even if they were loaning money, we're not eligible to, uh, Alberta Capital, uh, are we?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that, that would be, in a perfect world, if we wanted to amortize something over a fixed term, that's the way to go. There's no debate. Um, but they are.
Timeline?
Yeah, so that, they only do two intakes a year. That is true. So March was the last one and then the next one is hypothetically September, but they're not lending right now. They're not entertaining loans for that intake right now.
Okay, Councillor Barnes?
Has the golf course opened?
Yeah, it opened last Friday.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I said so on my last release.
Sorry, Councillor Barnes, what was your question?
Yeah, must have been the response.
Well, the weather hasn't been very good. Yeah. So weather hasn't been great and we have to, um, there's a number of conditions we've had to apply. So, uh, we can only put people, we can only book tee times in double the increment distance we could last year. So we have to stretch out where people are out on the course, uh, which you could have a good debate about. We can be two meters apart, but not fifteen minutes apart, which is strange to me. But anyway, we can have that debate later. Um, so revenues are going to be down. They're certainly going to be down because we have to limit our amount of users. We can't sell anything. We can't have a pro shop or anything open. So all those sales are going to go away. Um, but so far it's been, given the weather, it's been okay.
Good, okay, thank you.
Jeff, to go back to the line of credit, so just to make sure that I understand how we intend to do it. So we going to take hundred sixty-five thousand from the reserve, apply it. We have a four hundred fifty thousand dollar line of credit with the credit union. And then we may use some of the surplus of this year's budget, if there is any, right against that line of credit. And hopefully we can do so within one or two years or three years at the worst.
Yeah, so that would be at your discretion at the end of the year when we talk about reserves again as to how much you want to apply. But if, but if there's any chance we can come even close to, I mean, heaven forbid, we could break even at the golf course, that we all of a sudden have a bit of a surplus there because in this budget, we are, we are covering a large loss at the golf course due to lower revenues. So the more we can close that gap, that'll create surplus at the end of the year.
Okay, so Jeff, just to carry on a little bit in my thinking, the, uh, bylaw, the borrowing bylaw is substantially higher than the four hundred fifty thousand dollar line of credit.
Right.
It had say we were going to go for six hundred fifteen thousand. So that's what the borrowing, borrowing bylaw will be.
Well, actu- actually, your borrowing bylaw still says four hundred and fifty. The document the credit union prepared was six fifteen because last week that's what we asked them to prepare.
Okay, all right.
We'll only access, we'll only access four hundred and fifty thousand of that. In fact, I'll have them pare it down.
Okay, I, I understand that. So it's on a paper, but doesn't mean that that's what the borrowing bylaw will say.
Right.
Or borrowing bylaw will say four hundred fifty thousand.
And when we send them a copy of that bylaw, they'll have to move the number to four hundred and fifty. They won't lend us six fifty.
All right. So that's what I was wondering. I just was trying to make sure the numbers match. Okay, you want to carry on unless somebody else wants to ask?
So we can talk a little bit more about that borrowing bylaw after, but, um, I just wanted you to be aware. It's not exactly as we left last week. We were looking to apply more now. Uh, we've taken kind of half and half. Uh, otherwise, if you look at the last page, they are pretty, I think you'd be aware of almost everything or they're pretty minor or you'd be aware of what's going on with these. So there's not much else there to, to talk about. Um, we put the downfall line in, in the project, so that's there. Um, that's about it, unless there's any questions that you want to discuss any of those items.
Councillor Bengry?
Jeff, is our solar farm up and running yet?
No, it's not. We've, we've run into a couple of things there. Um, I think it's actually pretty much ready to roll. We ran into some regulatory problems. Um, how do I summarize this story? Uh, let's see. Um, Jason, our first guy that was with N Max that set all this up, left N Max for a time. And those that replaced him didn't have the same regulatory vision of the project that Jason did. And so we've run into some hurdles as far as the micro gen versus distributed generation and all these things on the regulatory side. And that's caused us a few problems. Um, but we have it all sorted out now. We're good. Everything's fine. And as per we initially, how we initially intended it. And, um, we're just getting all that tidied up. And we have to do some formal things, like we have to do an application to ourselves to connect to our system. And we have to do some stuff with the A U C, but shooting for June first, the only saving gracer is we haven't had to pay for it yet.
So our revenues are going to maintain the same, the same main revenues?
Well, they'll be prorated for the months of the year.
Yeah, but they're, they're maintaining the projected revenues?
Based on last months, yes.
Okay, and how does Kevin Phillips feel about the whole thing?
Well, Kevin's been the one helping me through it, right? He's the one that understands the regulatory piece, so he's frustrated by the delay, but we're on the other side of that now.
All right, thank you.
All right, so, uh, Council, here you have it. There is a budget that is balanced, that is absolutely, uh, really amazing. My point of view, considering all the different hurdles we had to jump through. And, uh, we could approve that budget the way it is. So there is a formal way to do it. You need to really have the proper wording. And so if someone can, uh, manage to get through that motion, I'll entertain that person.
Budget not, not the mill rate.
The bu- the budget.
I would make a motion.
In your RF request for decision, I, I worded what that should look like, if you will.
Right here. It's right before that, Councillor.
I have it.
Okay, would you please, it's not a mill rate, right? It's a budget.
Yeah, I have that.
Councillor Barnes, go ahead.
Okay, so. So whereas the council has reviewed the budget the past two meetings and we've gone over it and the changes have been made, but they have not impacted the, the bottom line nor the proposed mill rate. I move that we approve the, uh, budget as presented, including all the amendments and from the previously, previously passed budget.
Okay, so that's a two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget.
Budget, yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I think it's unanimous. All right, so that's very good. So next, we have the bylaw sixteen ninety, the mill rate bylaw. Now, the mill rate, uh, bylaw has not changed from the first reading. Therefore, we can consider second and third reading. Councillor Court?
Make a motion to, to have second reading by law sixteen ninety, the mill rate bylaw.
Okay, questions? See none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Councillor Drew, you had your hand up. You wanted to do the third reading for us?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to do third reading on bylaw sixteen ninety mill rate by, by law.
Okay, all in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, see unanimous. All right, so that is good. We cannot do six.
But that'll wait for a few months, Jeff.
I'm sorry?
I said we got that out of wait for a few months, Jeff.
Yeah, it sounds good.
Yeah, until we, until we deal with that a little bit more formally. Okay, uh, we will do the bylaw sixteen eighty-nine after the public hearing. So we're going to go on the seven, seven A emergency coordination center update. Jeff has had many subcommittees in the past couple of weeks. And well, the past week for sure. And maybe you want to give us an update, Jeff?
Sure, you bet. I just, again, quick update for information. Um, things are fairly calm as far as our health sector. And things are going fairly well. We met this morning again with the health sector groups, our hospital, our seniors care facilities and the support services. Um, and then we had a government agency meeting this afternoon as well. So by and large, everything's fairly okay, but to be very frank, in both health and government sector, it's the mental health aspect of this is starting to become a concern. So stress is a little high at our care facilities. People haven't seen their families. Mother's Day came and went without a visit. Those kind of things which, which are sad and difficult for many of those, uh, people there. So the seniors care facilities, the Chinook and the Lee Crest are beginning outdoor visitation this week. Uh, that's been limited because the weather's been so dang cold. And, and you can't take grandma out in the cold for very long, right? You just, that's not appropriate. So they're struggling a little bit with not getting cooperative weather and yet trying to accommodate outdoor visitation, but that's, that's in the works. And the hospital's doing that at long-term care as well. So trying to get some interaction there. Um, all of our government entities, our CMP, fire, um, hold on, let me switch back to this one. School division, blood tribe, Cardston County, town of Cardston. Uh, there was some concern for a while about personal protective equipment, but that's all flowing now. Uh, there seems to be supply, so everyone's doing fairly well. Uh, speaking of personal protective equipment, volunteers in the community, we've distributed almost four hundred cloth masks to Lee Crest, Chinook, Carson Support Services and the Blood Tribe. And these are mostly being used for visitors to the clients of those facilities. So if you want to go visit someone, you'll be issued a mask in order to go visit them. Social distancing requirements stay the same.
Jeff, can I mention that those masks were made by the quilters, the guild in town?
Well, we, we've actually got a few sources. Yes, the Quilters Guild has been awesome, first of all. They've done a lot for us. The Hutterite Colony has done, uh, quite a number, a couple hundred. And the relief societies are doing quite a bunch as well. So we're getting, you know, thirty or forty a day coming in right now. Uh, in fact, Nadine from the Blood Tribe is coming to pick up another hundred tomorrow for one of the shelters that they have set up there, uh, on the reserve. So that seems to be going well. Um, I had to send in a, a document to Alberta Health today, just so you're aware. Um, it is called a community, so I don't get the name wrong, not that you necessarily care, but a community readiness scan checklist. So Alberta Health wants to know that their communities have taken a proactive approach. We're aware of needs. We're meeting with the stakeholders in the community, that kind of thing, which we are. And, and so I submitted that to them. It was about a three page we had to submit. And then lastly, the messaging right now is twofold in the province and in Southern Alberta. One is, um, as businesses begin to open as part of phase one on the weekend, there's a million questions, uh, and that might, well, millions, uh, an exaggeration, but there's thousands for sure. And so they're directing them all through what's called Biz Connect. And every government agency is receiving the questions through that portal. So we're, we've, we're starting to send out that email in our messaging into the business community that anyone, including government sector or business sector nonprofit, can send their questions through that email. And, uh, and then they'll get answers through that. The second thing, of course, the big concern is just because we hit phase one, doesn't mean all rules are off. And so vigilance is still required. And so that will be part of the messaging from the town, county and the province over the next few days. But by and large, knock on wood, uh, we do have eight active cases within the county, including the Blood Tribe. Sorry, we have six active cases. We have eight total confirmed. Let me, let me clarify that. So two are recovered as of yesterday. Um, trace contact, uh, monitoring has gone very well. Uh, particularly the Blood Tribe has taken a very aggressive approach to testing. Uh, they have tested everyone who has been to the shelter and they've all been negative. And they're aggressively testing in their communities, so they're doing an excellent job. Uh, Alberta Health was quite complimentary of them today. Um, and, oh, the, the one concern for our communities was the potential outbreak. Um, and oh, the, the one concern for our communities was the potential outbreak in Fort McLeod. So at the uh, the factory, the, the horse plant there, they've tested a hundred and fifty people attached to that facility and there's been four confirmed cases who are isolated and they think that was contained very quickly. But we all have between Pincher Creek, Cardston, Cardston County Blood Tribe, we all have members of the community that work there. And so there was a real concern that that would get out of hand in a hurry. They did aggressive contact tracing and it looks as though that's contained quite well. And so that was good. There was some concern on that one. Um, and uh, oh, yep, Mayor.
No, I just wanted to say one regarding the volunteer uh, meeting, you may want to uh, let council know about the gift we received of protective.
Oh yeah, the owners, the owners of Carriage Lane Mall donated five hundred surgical masks. And they've requested that we distribute them to seniors who uh, can't afford to buy them. Um, so that they can go out and buy necessities. So they're selling those for seventy-five dollars a box, by the way. There's fifty in a box. And they donated five hundred of them to us. So I mean, a great donation. I went down today, Mayor, and thanked her, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah, so.
If you have a chance to, to pass by and say thank you will be, that'd be great.
So we're just trying to figure out how to distribute them. Um, and the best way to do that safely. So we're going to work through that and try and do that first of the week and get them out. So that was a good thing. Other than that, that's a quick update on what's been happening on the COVID nineteen front.
Jeff?
Thank you very much. Judge, Counselor Bang Green, Counselor Barnes?
Jeff, I got a memo from Minister Pahn. Uh, and she talked about rent uh, supplement for businesses. Have we had any of those requests yet?
So that's not something I'm very familiar with, unfortunately. So to answer your question, no, I haven't heard that. And I'm not terribly familiar. I'd have to revert to Angel on that one. She's trying to keep up on those programs, but I haven't heard a request for it, Counselor.
Okay, please, it come through, it come through for uh, seniors? And it's called Rent Relief Program to help small businesses pay rent. I'm just wondering if we've had any applications on that.
Okay, so uh, that was a federal initiative, this one?
No, Minister Pahn is, is Alberta senior.
That's the Alberta, Alberta senior. Okay, all right. No. Okay, so uh, any question, Council? Counselor Barnes?
Yeah, Jeff, were we planning another, a meeting here this month anytime soon?
Uh, I guess if, if you want to have one, the situation's pretty quiet. So I don't have anything right now that we need to um, make some, some urgent decisions on. Let's put it that way. So I was kind of.
We're having a meeting just for meeting sake.
Yeah, so I'm just waiting until there might be a change in status or something where we gotta react.
Okay.
All right, you bet, you bet.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, now we have uh, Mr. Brand Wulsey will come a little bit later on.
Mayor, this is a letter from him. It's in your package.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. That's a Remington Carriage Museum request for funding uh, for a possible harvest festival in lieu of the uh, party in the park. It's an interesting thought. And uh, I think we should maybe consider that and maybe if the time is right to have a community celebration. If we can uh, be more than fifteen people, that would possibly be great. Yes, Counselor Salk, your battery is running low. Uh, Jeff, uh, my battery is running low.
Plug the ever Eddie in.
Go ahead. Where's the thing?
Already has a recommendation in that respect, so why don't we just?
Just a second here, Counselor.
Yeah, thanks. I'm good. I'm in business.
I didn't catch it, Counselor Salk, sorry.
Said administration already has a recommendation regarding this particular item.
Yeah. So you want to go ahead, Counselor Salk? Are you up? Sure, I mean, we need to have some kind of resolution.
It's all right. Repeat yourself, give it.
Administration's recommendation on this particular item. Do you want me to elaborate?
Well, make it as a proper motion, if you don't mind.
You could probably just take the last sentence of that, Counselor, and that would work. Administration recommends dot, dot, dot. You could go from there.
Jeff, will this uh, will this date interfere with the United Church fall uh?
Administration, I, I make a motion that we accept administration's recommendation for the use of Party in the Park funds to support the endeavor that's proposed by the Remington Carriage Museum.
Okay, thank you. By the way, the money was in the budget already. Okay, so it's not changing anything. So uh, do you want us to? Yeah, we will, we'll vote on that. All in favor?
Counselor Brown has a question, I believe.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Brown, go ahead.
I just have a question. So I love this idea. I think it's great. I fully support it. I guess my question is, what if, what if by August celebration, um, the numbers of COVID are down? And we're able to um, have, have large mass gatherings? Are we, are we for sure not doing Cardston Days? Like, because it was my understanding, we hadn't, we hadn't made that decision yet. So we're wanting to use money, but I'm just, I'm just wondering, are we, are we for sure not doing that? And so then the money will be given to this or are we supporting this in theory? More information to follow?
Uh, all is pending to whatever will be given by AHS, right? But Jeff, want to say something and then Counselor Salk?
Just to that, Counselor Brown, we left both the July first money and the Heritage Week money in the budget. So they don't have to be mutually exclusive in this case.
Okay, okay. Yeah, everything is pending on what the uh, the government will allow us to do in term of gathering. So Counselor Salk, Counselor Barnes?
So, the Party in the Park is July the first, and so that's fun. That won't be happening. So those funds can't. Heritage Days is a whole separate thing.
Correct. Thank you. Counselor Barnes?
So, uh, if I understood correctly, we're, we weren't going to make a decision on Heritage days until after the first part of June anyway.
Okay. Counselor, you need to be closer to your machine because we cannot hear you.
I was understanding that we weren't going to make a decision on the Heritage Days until after the first part of June anyway.
Yeah, that's correct, Counselor. Okay, so did we, we, we have a motion and we need to vote. All in favor? All right, so the funds will be diverted toward the festival in the fall if there is no celebration. Because there is no celebration, I would say. All right, so we have about fifteen minutes left. So let's carry on uh, the March two thousand twenty financial report. Anything that you want to ask or question?
I'm just gonna tell you that we're in a lot better shape than a lot of other communities in our area.
Well, you know, I hate to compare, but uh, relatively to our own self, we're in good shape.
Yes, we are.
Yeah. I have a question regarding land reserves, regarding land re- reserve. Um, there's been some, some kind of talk out there about a dog park, an off-leash dog park. Have we, Jeff? Has there been any more information about whether or not we've got a spot that that could be done and have an off-leash area?
So I would say in the last five years, no one's sent anything to the town about an off-leash dog park that I can recall.
There, there was a whole bunch on uh, Cardston Community Discussion Page, not the rant page, but the discussion page. La- um, a few days ago. I don't know, did anybody else see it?
I thought that's what you're building that new fence for.
Uh, Counselor Bang Green, just give Counselor Caltor a chance.
I was on that page as well, Counselor Barnes. And I did reply to the person asked that question. I told them to write a letter to the town and then present it to town council. That would be the proper step, but they agreed. So if they haven't done that yet, then I wouldn't buy that too much.
Yeah.
Uh, we had, we had looked into that, that very idea years back. There were many major drawbacks uh, that we could not really solve. So uh, maybe if there are citizens that are willing to do a little bit of work towards that, it might be an interesting concept to entertain.
Yeah, uh, just a comment.
Go ahead.
Uh, after I read all that, I'm, my wife and I drove all over town, all the town-owned properties. The only place that I could see that might even work is where we dump all of our wood chips up there. If we were to do something, flatten out that land or do something, that to me, it's only, I couldn't find another place that that, that might work, but that was just something I thought might be a possibility. So anyway, down the road, if somebody sends in, we can look at it.
Thank you, Counselor Caltor.
This is very brief. I, I use the um, nature trail every day and there's lots and lots and lots of dogs on that nature trail. So I think there might be a a desire and maybe even a need for some kind of a dog walk, a dog park, but that's down the road once they present it, present it to council.
Yeah, and I think I need to present and come up with some idea and do a little bit of homework. Uh, and that would be nine nine. All right, thank you so much for that. We now going to go into the correspondence. As you can see, there is an awful lot of correspondence. Uh, Minister Casey Madu is from uh, Alberta Municipal Affairs regarding all the COVID amendment summary. There is a letter from uh, Mr. Barry Morishida.
Three letters.
Uh, solit- uh, I'm sorry?
Three letters.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to say the first one is solititing committee members. The second is regarding the update on benefits. And the third one has to do with the extension of conference resolutions uh, deadline. As you can see, they're not so sure if uh, or when the conference will take place. And then there is a letter from Tanya Stone and uh, as always, she's very thorough in her presentation. It's uh, from A U M A reporting on herself's own update. And the last letter is a fairly interesting letter. Our council citizen on um, on the east side of town, Homesick Lane, from uh, Dr. Glenn Jones. Now, there is something that I have asked uh, Jeff regarding that road because as you remember, last year we put a coat of uh, some kind of asphalt on it, but it broke down fairly rapidly, unfortunately. Because the, the sub, the, the the base of that road is really dirt. It's all what it is. It's not a very stable, stable base. So I was asking uh, Jeff, regarding the states, how many properties, first of all, are along that stretch? So there are eight property owners along that road, Homesickers Lane.
Mayor, if I could just clarify that.
Yeah.
There's eight residences. There's a number of other empty property owners, non-developed property owners.
Yeah, yeah, there are eight properties that are developed with homes on it.
Yep.
That's really the correct way. And there are many other fields that are just pasture. It's about it. So um, what the request there is to really fix that road so that the dust stop being so brutal. And I understand a sin is, is bad. I cannot say it's any good. What I don't understand is why there is an increased traffic on that road. I really cannot fathom why people would be using that road. Or are they using it as a quick connection to the bypass? Possibly, but it's very strange to me that I would do it that way. So Jeff, you want to explain a little bit what happened when those houses were built? What was paid and what was not paid? There were no improvement to, to pay for roads at that point.
So I, I don't know a lot of the great history of it. Excuse me. I just made a comment to you about they have the road they paid for. So had they bought a lot along a paved road, they would have paid much more for the lot because someone would have had to have paid to develop it. So when you look at improving a road that benefits a very specific amount of citizens like this, you could entertain a local improvement tax if they agreed. They may not, but you would give them the option to build the proper road base and finish it based on, and then paid for by a local improvement tax. Now, the problem here is, well, I shouldn't say it's a problem. One of the challenges here is you have very sparse development over a very long road. So the burden of that local improvement tax falls on a few. So it's a big number.
Problem.
Yeah.
Counselor Bang Green?
Jeff, what did we do uh, the road coming from the uh, oh, from the Agro Dome down past our lift station?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, past uh, Henley's Development?
Mm-hmm, Seventh Avenue.
Yeah, yeah. What did we do from that road?
Well, we just used that stuff that we call Chinese asphalt. It's just an oil slurry uh, gravel mixture.
But that did a pretty good job. Now, is there, why is the difference between that road and the, and the one out Jones? It's basically the same mess in the bottom.
I, I don't know that for sure. I couldn't say.
So um, Jeff, last time when we put some of that asphalt product, oil product on it, what was the cost to the town to do that dust abatement?
I'd have to get back to you on that, Mayor. I don't know. I don't know.
Okay, because right now, right now, they're, they're different. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Barnes. You want to say something?
I, I was saying, didn't we on that bypass road use that from the highway down past uh, uh, the A- Agro Dome there? Didn't we do that for ninety thousand dollars? With that Chinese asphalt?
I'd have to go look.
I'm pretty sure that's what it was, but let's figure the that's in my mind. And that was during the last council.
All right, so Counselor Brown, Counselor Drew?
So I guess, uh, I mean, when I read this letter, um, is this, is just, it is my understanding that this letter is one person's perspective and not all eight households' perspectives that are on that road? Or is it all eight of those households that are struggling with the dust? Because I mean, I, I lived out of town and we lived on a gravel road. We built the house on a gravel road and we had dust. That was, that was unfortunate, but I just, I'm just wondering if this is just one person or if everyone on that road is really struggling with the dust. And so are we looking at spending ninety thousand dollars to stop dust for one person? Just.
Okay, all right, hold on a second. Counselor Drew, Counselor Barnes?
So when I read this letter, I wondered if um, there was a complaint about the road? Or there was a complaint about traffic and the dust? And it sounds like the road's okay. It's just the dust. I wonder if we could put up a couple of signs that say local traffic only to cut down people cutting through there and that might alleviate the situation, but that's just my thought.
Okay, Ca- uh, Jeff and Counselor Barnes?
Well, go ahead, Counselor Barnes.
Hey, in the letter, it says in here, we've wondered if that product when broken. Okay. In the letter, it says in here, we've wondered if that product when broken down made the fine, the dust finer and really come, come off in bigger clouds. It's most unpleasant and our neighbors on both sides of the street have been grumbling that something can be done. So it's not just Dr. Jones. I think he's just kind of speaking for the group there on Homeseekers. So.
We, we suppose that, but we don't know them. Okay, councillor Ben Green and Jeff.
To answer councillor Brown's uh, question. When, when ex-councillor Jones writes a letter to the town, he has indicated and he has worked with his neighbors. So you can bet your dollar, bottom dollar that he's talking about the whole neighbors around that area. They're all complaining about it.
Yeah.
I was just surprised at the tone of the letter. They say, what has the town leadership done? I'm afraid the road existed when he was on council. I think Jeff.
I think he complained about when he was on council too.
I'm just going to share something with you here to councillor Brown's uh, question. One of the things that's unique about this road, and I don't know how well you can see this, but this is Homeseekers running east and west. Here's Doc Jones' house. He would be, except for uh, Robert Smith, he's easily the closest one to the road. I mean, you look how far back Colin Bond is or you look how far back uh, Bill Morton is and some of these properties, they're so far back to the south, chances are they're not very impacted by it. I mean, no one prefers dust, don't get me wrong, but I don't think they're as impacted because first of all, if the westerly wind hits Doc Jones, and there's only two homes, by the way, on that side. The rest are on the east end with one exception set very far back. I mean, that's a long way. So I, I don't know how acute the issue is for the rest of the neighbors because most of them are way back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, councillor Coles.
Speaking of councillor Drew about local traffic, I use that road when I go out to dump. And I think that's where a lot of people from the west side do.
Okay.
Just go there to make the connection there and um, I don't know how you have local traffic only on that. It'd be hard.
Except they could, you could access the
I could go downtown and go down.
You could access, yeah.
I could go to councillor Silk's neighborhood and take my garbage out that way, I guess.
Councillor Silk, you wanted to speak.
When people decide to build someplace, we don't impose restrictions on them and where they build and, you know. So why exactly are we, this is, why is this our problem? We didn't tell them to build out there.
Well, in fact, but Jeff plays the devil's advocate, but go ahead, carry on.
I think we start getting in a slippery slope with that because there are residents on the west side of town in various developments that have also asked for better roads. And the whole notion of having a local improvement tax has been sort of repugnant to them. But I think we could make that offer to those residents. There's a local improvement tax. If you wish to help with the, having a proper, better road, then there's that opportunity and I think that's what we should pursue.
All right. So councillor, I uh, I agree with you. But here is also what I'm wondering. We do not understand where the traffic is coming from. And we do not have any data relevant to tell us what the height of that traffic. Maybe we should try to see if we could have someone monitor that traffic. We, we need to kind of come to understand what kind of traffic are we talking about? And then we need to try to figure out, in my opinion, if there is really such a large traffic that's not local, since there is only eight residents there, then we should maybe decide, does a town has, has uh, a need to cooperate with those uh, resident taxpayers regarding that tax, uh, that local improvement tax? Because if a lot of traffic has nothing to do with the residents, it's a town traffic, then doesn't not become somehow, somewhat part of a responsibility to look into it? Just a thought. Councillor Coles.
I could use that same argument with Seventh Street going by my house. Most of the traffic going by there is not local traffic. It's coming from somewhere else. Yet I paid my share.
You paid your share, yes.
Put the concrete asphalt in there, so.
Yeah. Yeah, there, there is, there, it's, it's, it's a hard one, that one. What I really would like also, I think councillor Silk has a good point, but I also would like to know how much it cost us last year when we oiled that surface? Could you maybe bring that back to council? Jeff?
Yep.
I don't hear you. Thank you.
Uh, I shouldn't be
To yours, please, nothing else.
Just to be smart, mayor. Just to be smart, maybe they're trying to avoid the next intersection down where we have the sinkholes. Sorry. You come into that back road, now I'll tell you that.
Okay, all right. Okay, so if I understand properly, uh, we want to direct administration to propose a local improvement tax and uh, try to also see what kind of traffic there is there? Do you want to have administration look into that? I mean, it could be paying a student a couple of days. I don't know. That will be up to the administration to figure out, to monitor what the traffic is? Should we know? Or do we don't want no part of it? Council, don't stay silent. Let me know. Councillor Coles.
Doctor Jones obviously know more about the traffic going up and down there than I would. But whenever I've been on that road, there hasn't been, in my mind, an overly excessive amount of traffic there. But then Doctor Jones is on that one, I don't, so I don't know for sure.
Or do we ask him to monitor that himself and give us a sense? Okay, so uh, there is no take on that, all that. I can see you all nicely silent.
Councillor Brown, I can
Councillor Brown?
So I, I'm fine to put So I'm fine to put forward, um, um, put a, um, how, what was the wording of the tax?
Local, local improvement tax.
I'm fine to put a local improvement tax, offer it to them. And if those um, residents and farmers in that community want to step forward and do it, just because we offer it doesn't mean it's going to happen. The ball's then in their court. But I think, I don't think we need to pay somebody to tell us, yep, there's lots of vehicles on this road. I feel like, I don't know, I just don't think we need to do that. I think we could talk to Doc Jones and I think he would have a pretty dang good idea of who's coming and going on that road.
Councillor Drew? Councillor Silk?
I agree. I think uh,
Councillor Silk, go ahead.
I think it's a pretty simple answer. No, I was just going to make a comment first. I think it's pretty odd. I didn't think so.
No, I can hear you.
It says muted.
You're fine councillor, I can hear you.
Okay. Mayor, take your earplugs off. So I think it's pretty obvious that he uses that road as Okay. I think everybody uses that road as an access point to the east bypass. And that's probably where the traffic is coming from.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm saying about.
Says that my internet's unstable. I'm not sure if it's the internet or me.
All right. Okay, all right.
Do you want me to make a motion to have administration
Please go ahead.
Do the tax? Okay. I'll make that motion.
One second here, guys. What is going on?
Mine's doing the same thing, though.
It's awful.
Like everything's echoing and we're all lagging now?
Yeah.
No, it's good now. The beauty, the beauty of uh, media. You are muted. Okay, so you muted me.
Hmm. I don't know what's going on there.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, mayor, mayor, stop by muting yourself because you're going through the conference phone. Yeah, stay muted.
I shall. Am I good now?
Yep.
Okay.
I hope so.
All right, so let's carry on. So councillor Drew, you made a motion? You're lagging.
Yeah, I did.
So we have a motion. Can we vote on that motion? All in favor? Can you vote? Uh, you're not voting? Councillor Ben Green, please vote. Thank you. All right.
Yeah, I did.
I think councillor Barnes frozen.
All right. So we done with that?
Yeah, yes. I'm wondering, I know this sounds a little bizarre, but I'm wondering if we outlawed it off and
Uh, okay, well, if that's what we need to do, let's do that and we'll go right away into the uh,
Just one sec, one sec here.
Can we make a motion?
Just hold on.
We need to go to the public hearing.
Let me just work with Shem here and see what we can do.
Sounds better all of a sudden.
Well, I think if we add that table on both ends and add a long table.
Please.
We have a big room here, so we can space.
For the love of all, holy, can we meet face to face?
Councillor Ben Green, councillor Ben Green, you?
I'll make a motion that we go to public hearing.
Uh, sure. All in favor? Okay, so we go to Jeff. Jeff, you want to present our the summary of
You bet. Give me one second.
Let's call the borrowing by law, water waste, wastewater, sorry, wastewater waterfall.
Yeah. So let me do the formal thing and then I want to talk to you about a couple of details with this. So um, this is a, so whereas the council has decided to issue a bylaw undertaking the completion of the replacement of a wastewater waterfall line from the wastewater treatment plant. Um, cost estimates are said to be, we have four hundred and fifty thousand. Those actually are, we know the cost estimates are six fifteen, but we're only endeavoring to borrow four hundred and fifty. Um, other than that, it's pretty straightforward that uh, what the intent of it is, is to borrow to replace a section of the waterfall line. We'll borrow it from Alberta Capital Finance or another authorized financial institution by way of debenture. Uh, we already have that agreement from the bank, so we're good there. Um, so that, that's the, the formal part of it. Now, I just wanted to mention a couple of things that came up from last time we discussed this. I had a good meeting with Stantec and asked them about um, how I get some assurance that the quotes we have to replace us are not market value. Because if, if this is a market value quote, we need to put it out to bid and we need to accept competitive tenders. That's the responsibility we have. So they did an analysis of bids that they have had come in. Um, and I think I have the letter here, one second. So they looked at other projects that they had tendered recently. And they also did an estimate on what they would have priced this project at. Um, should they be pricing it based on market value? And their estimate is that uh, it is our opinion that the price provided by Porter Tanner is below industry standard market value based on our cost estimates and final design. So um, I believe, you know, we have a quotes below market value here and that's a good thing. So I just wanted to share that with you. And then we talked at length earlier about the, the line of credit using surplus to repay it and those kind of things. So mayor, that's all I have regards to the public hearing.
All right. So uh, have you received any inquiry from the public that we should be made aware of?
No, we haven't.
You haven't. And we do not have anybody in the gallery. Our citizens are so trusting and uh, it always makes me nervous to say that, the least. But I know that we are uh, moving very carefully and uh, respecting our budget and making sure that we do not have undue debt in this town. So because of it, I feel comfortable that the borrowing that we're doing is what needs to be done to repair a very frustrating problem that forever will we, will remain mysterious to us all, but needs to be fixed. It's costing us yearly seventy thousand dollar plus in repairs and we can't carry on like that. So uh, councillor Silk, this is a, a public hearing. So at this point, I will withhold your intervention until we come out of the public hearing. And that's when we discuss the bylaw or do, can we do it now?
Yeah, you, you can debate the bylaw here. That's fine.
Okay, all right. So any debates regarding that? Do you need more information councillor Silk? Do you want to add some information?
No, just a comment and that's, there's
Go ahead.
There may be a better than average chance that we actually get some money as a shovel-ready project from the problem. Right?
I would hope.
If we do, it'll be wonderful, but that's, from the last that I read, they're not quite ready to assign the project.
Yeah. The AUM is already recommending that they do the same MSI funding formulas, which means
Yeah. Which mean we would get some money. Yeah. Councillor Coles?
I, I just want to reiterate what I said a couple of weeks ago. I just hope there's a way of making sure that this is somewhat uh, warranted, guaranteed. So if it breaks in six months or a year, that we're gonna not go through another five hundred thousand dollars fixing it.
Councillor Coles, it's an excellent point and I made the same point uh, with Jeff. So Jeff, do you want to please let us know what Stantec is offering us in terms of warranty?
Yeah, sorry councillor Coles, I should have mentioned that. I forgot. I asked them that specifically. And I said, how is this viewed? And they said, from Stantec's point of view, this is viewed as a new construction, new design. And it carries all the warranty that a new project would. It's, there's no inferior warranty as a replacement. So they've redesigned it with new product, new install.
And what is that warranty?
Well, it, it's complicated, but essentially what it is, it gives you so much time from the design and it prorates a little bit down over time. Um, but you'd have a couple of years anyway to make sure that it functions properly.
Okay, so the materials are covered with it?
Well, Stantec's going to be on site for the whole installation, to oversee the installation and the bedding and everything like that. So that's part of their quality assurance that they have to do.
Right. And the pipe is of a higher quality now?
Mm-hmm.
And could withstand even higher pressure? All right. So that's good. So let's come out of a public hearing because honestly, there is no other question. So let's come out of a public hearing because honestly, there is no other question?
I made a motion to go into into public hearing. I'll make a motion to reconvene in council meeting.
Thank you. All in favor? All right. So Counselor Silk, do you want to uh do something regarding the bylaw now? Uh, we have now done the first uh reading. So we need to do second and third reading. Go ahead, Counselor.
It will be my pleasure to move that we accept second reading of bylaw sixteen eighty-nine borrowing by bylaw wastewater outfall line.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. So we need to ask third reading, Counselor Brown?
I made a motion for a third reading of uh bylaw sixteen eighty-nine borrowing bylaw wastewater outfall line.
Okay, all in favor? All right. So you know, it's almost six fifteen and from what I can see, we have uh done all our business except for our six fifteen delegation that's going to be in closed session. So at this point, the regular meeting is concluded. We need a motion to go in closed session.
Make that motion. Yeah, I'll make that motion to go into closed session.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous. So thank you to the media. Uh, what I wanted to know, Jeff, I see channel thirty-two, but are they online? Are they recording us?
Um, yes, so channel Cory will be done here and then um Shem, I think you can hear me. I think the mayor's computer is record, is controlling the recording in for us. Because I can't control it here because you signed in for her before I signed in. Can you pause that recording?